If I have your attention, we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Jacobs, if you'll have the roll call, please.
Mr. Bowles. Mr. Brown.
President.
Mr. Coleman.
President.
Dr. Dozier.
Here.
Mr. Almore.
Here.
Ms. Dimmery.
Here.
Mr. Urban. Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mrs. Hartung.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Senator Leatherman. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. McIntyre.
Here.
Mr. Norwood.
Here.
Dr. O'Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Richardson. Mr. Sam.
Here. Please mark Ms. Richardson's excuse afterwards, she called and talked to me about it.
Ms. Chairman, could it be noted, too, that Senator Leatherman is serving the purposes of the university elsewhere at this very moment?
Yes, sir. Working through those vetoes. Next item, approval of the minutes, March 1st, 2013. Everybody should have an opportunity to review those, any corrections or additions or changes to those minutes.
Will they be approved?
So I think Ms. Coleman made a motion, Mr. Freeman, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to committee reports. Executive affairs met this afternoon, reviewed a variety of topics, mainly the budget, and those items will be covered during financial affairs and facilities. No action was taken. Most of y'all were in that meeting, so here are no questions. We'll move on to academic affairs and accreditation.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief as well, because a lot of folks were in the meeting and heard some of the same numbers that we heard in our meeting, but there are a couple of things that I'd like to point out. We heard from the faculty chair, Becky Flanagan, and I think by now everyone has heard that our dean of the School of Education, Ron Falconberry, will be retiring, and he will be greatly missed, and we were very sad to hear that, but we look forward to the new faculty members that are becoming on board next year and his replacement as well. We have also, I think that's between 15 and 16 new faculty members coming. As far as the enrollment next year, it is up from last year with 565 new freshmen having attended orientation, and we also learned that, as with most of the new freshman class, a large percentage of those incoming students are applying for financial aid, and our staff has been busy working. I think that percentage is about 87 percent, and our staff has been working to make sure that they get the aid that they're eligible for so that they can continue on with their plans of enrolling at Francis Marion. And then we heard from the provost, Dr. Chapman, and he talked to us about some of the faculty accomplishments, as always. It's just wonderful to hear how, what prolific research that's going on here at the university and writing, and we were also privileged to hear Travis Knowles talk about his program down at Wild Sumaca in Ecuador, and it's just a fascinating program, and Francis Marion is very fortunate to be a partner in that project down there in South America. So we had a very good report, a very good meeting.
Thank you. Good report. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to development and alumni. Mr. Tracy Freeman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We had our meeting just a little while ago, and the meeting was opened by Mr. Dow Bridges. As of June 1st, Mr. Bridges now rolls into the role of Vice President for Development and Executive Director of the FMU Education Foundation. That second part of that, you all may not have heard it before, but that is the FMU Foundation has changed their name to the FMU Education Foundation. That was decided on the 22nd of May of this year. Of course, Ms., our interim person, Mrs. Libby Cooper, who had that role for a short period directly after Mr. Jay Dow moved on to other facilities. She still will be with us for approximately two days a week, doing some financial consulting on various accounts and so forth, and also having Mr. Bridges in various duties that's there. Also, we received the results in an audit that was indicated the foundation received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level that's possible. So kudos to that department on that. Also, to that foundation board, we've approved three new members. All three are graduates of Francis Marion. Mrs. Paul Seared, who's a BBNT, personally, Mr. Al Gibbons, and Mr. Donnie McDonald. Also, some other outreach programs, such as golf tournament, did a considerable amount of funds that was raised for it, so that was a very success. The Rural Leadership Institute and the Nonprofit Leadership Institute have had a very successful years, with more than 30 participants in each program. Recruitment is in planning, it's underway for the next future success year. Fundraisers, again, we have close to approximately half a million dollars has been raised thus far for the new industrial engineering program that will begin as of January 1st, which is the second semester of the year, and so we are looking forward to even more that will continue to come in from there. Another report was given by Mr. Julian Rung, Alumni Director, and Mr. Young, actually, we had an alumni to speak to the graduates directly after commencement ceremony. That was a very success, very well attended by both parents and students alike. The Student Alumni Association remains active. I've had several different activities during the past few months, and they're looking to gear up to have even more coming fall semester. The Alumni Association also had a meeting in April and in June. They have now voted, several new slate of officers is coming in, several have agreed to serve a second term, and additionally, they have Mr. Brian Kelly would take over as President for the next two years. And last, there's the summer cerise at the Moore Botanical Gardens, which is supposed to be held June 7th, it got postponed due to possibly inclement weather, has been rescheduled in the future, maybe sometime in September, October timeframe, but we will let, allow you to give you the information soon as it comes through. And Mr. Young also passed out a packet, recruitment packet, for the Alumni Association, has such things as stickers, there are paraphernalies that you can buy if you're alumni, such as photos and so forth, and so anyone that's alumni will be insured that would get that to you. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Good report. Anybody have any questions? Before we leave that, Julian, and tell me again, lifetime alumni is like, how much is it?
It's $400. You pay $100 down, and then you have three to four years to pay off the balance, and we'll send reminders.
It's a great buy, and you get like special privileges and all these other things. Yeah, it's great. And you won't ask them every year to join again and that type of thing. I'd encourage you to join. Thank you. Mr. George McIntyre, Financial Affairs and Facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our committee met, and first, we reviewed the quarterly budget summary, which you will find under Tab 3 in your notebooks. This is as of 6/1/13, so we're nearing the end of another fiscal year. This is just one month left in the year. We have collected almost 99 percent of our income for the year. The only thing left there are some summer school and miscellaneous fees to be collected, so we're just about there as far as the income goes. On the expenditure side, we've expended about 95 percent of our budget, so we're right on target as we wind down another fiscal year, and we're finishing this year in another strong financial position, and thanks to Jay Kispert and his staff, and to the administration, faculty staff, and the parents of students that, who all play a role in the financial positions and strength of the university, and thanks to them. Next, the head count, Mr. Chairman, has stayed very stable. We have seen some slight growth in the instruction area, which you would expect with the growth in our academic programs, also a little growth in public service as we do our outreach programs throughout the community, and also in the facilities area where, of course, we are adding facilities, such as the Performing Arts Center and the outdoor baseball stadium and outdoor athletic facility across the road. So, very stable with a little bit of growth in those areas, which is to be expected. I'll mention also in the financial assistance area, again, the very important Pell Grants that we see here projected at $10 million of income for 2013, 2014. That along with the federal Stafford loans are, just play a very important role in our financial situation here for our students. 87 percent of our students are projected to receive some form of financial assistance in the upcoming year, and the university continues to work hard to find scholarship money and other programs that will assist our students financially as they come to Francis Marion. That completes the budget summary. If anybody has any questions about that, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions on the budget summary? Hearing none. Do you have an action item?
Yes, sir. Next, on the agenda, we took up Resolution 0213, which is the proposed university budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The committee did discuss this at length and has unanimously approved Resolution 0213 for the university budget for the upcoming year. The proposal does include a 3.1 percent fee increase, and we feel that this package that we're presenting adequately, will adequately fund the university for the upcoming year in all operations that we're involved in here. I will mention in passing that the university remains one of the most economical higher education values in the state. We're remaining down at the very lower tier of the universities, the four-year universities as far as our fee structure. While we continue to grow, both in the physical plant, we continue to grow in our academic programs. Quality plus value is what we are all about, and so that's where we are, and we feel like we're meeting that goal and the expectations of our students and the community. So with that, I would make a motion on behalf of our committee to approve Resolution 0213.
Mr. McIntyre makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Freeman, seconds. Just to repeat this, for the 2013-14 annual budget for the university as presented in the attached, it includes a 3.1 increase in tuition and all other university fees affected with the fall 2013 semester. Any discussion? Any questions? Now would be appropriate time. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Last, yes, sir. I do have one other item. We did have a facilities report. I will mention to the board that the Office Services Building has been finished and is now occupied. Been there, the folks have been there about 30 days. Everything's going well there. There are a number of deferred maintenance issues going on around the campus that are underway or are about to be underway, and I'll mention, we have quite a list here, but I'll mention four or five of the major projects that are underway. The Fine Arts Center refurbishment, they are working on the aesthetics there and HVAC system to the tune of $310,000. That bid's been awarded, and there should be a final schedule coming up to get that work done by next week. In the Leatherman and McNair Science Facilities, there's quite a bit of extensive renovation going on on the interior there, with replacing carpet and replacing wallpaper and paint to the tune of over $421,000. In the library, the entire HVAC system is being replaced, along with some other issues over there, to the tune of over $550,000. That will be done over the Christmas break. And in the residence halls, DEF, we're having to replace some plumbing and copper lines and corroded pipes, infrastructure needs there, and these residence halls are getting a little age on them, and of course, they need upkeep and need some renovations. So the infrastructure there is being updated at the tune of about $122,000. So those are some of the major ticket items that are going on, so there's a lot of work going on, a lot of projects underway, both from refurbishing and then infrastructure, addressing infrastructure needs on the campus. Mr. Chairman, that pretty much winds up my report for the day, so if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions? I do want to thank Mr. McIntyre and his committee for the work that they do, putting the budget together. It's no easy task, and it's an extensive, hard ordeal, and I think it's still ongoing. Seems like it's always ongoing, and I thank you for your efforts and your work with that. Next, Student Affairs and Athletics, Mr. Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Carter. We had heard from Dean Ramey initially at our committee. As she indicated, this period of time for the Student Affairs Office is a part of a planning process, is a lot of planning taking place for the next academic year. Did want to mention a couple of things that happened during this year. The Spring Career Fair was attended by, we had nearly 60 employers represented, and had over 148 students attended, and had great news coverage, both on the Florence-Moore News, the TV-13, the Patriot Newspaper had a lot of extensive coverage. Student Government Elections were held this year. As you know, a president who had the last two years, Cody Simpson from Manning, is close to graduation, but he served two years, and you might want to know, he's serving an internship in Washington this summer and plans to be back on campus next fall, but he has yielded his post to Dustin James, who was elected President of the Francis Marion Student Government Association. Mark your calendars for August 17th, the annual move-in day, freshman move-in day. As Dean Ramey says, she's not sure whether hats or visors, but there will be something provided for those who help with the move-in. And of course, during that entire week following, there'll be the usual first of the year pool party. The Hypnastists will be back, and last year, that event was attended by over 1,200 people. So that was a significant event that took place, but like I said, this is part, more of a planning period for student government, I mean for the Student Affairs Office. Over on the athletic side, Murray Harstler reported that the GPA for spring teams was 2.87, which is slightly higher than the overall average FMU student of 2.6. We had 15 student athletes who were Peach Belt All-Conference Academic Award winners. We had 87 students this spring who had GPAs above 3.0. Number of Patriot student athletes, 10, and to be exact, were named the university's chapter of Chi Alpha Sigma, which is a National College Athlete Honor Society, so this was a great thing. The golf team had three top 10 finishes this year. Men's and women's tennis both went to the NCAA's tournaments this year. Men's tennis finished number 18 in the nation. Women's tennis equal the school record, 23 and 4, and finished 13th. Fundraising, which is always important to the academic, excuse me, Athletic Department, was very robust this year. We had well over $200,000 raised, and this continues a trend, an uptrend of fundraising for the Athletic Department. A special gift was, anonymous gift was given to the Athletic Department to purchase a custom golf van for team travel. This was very significant, as the modes of transportation in the past have not been quite up to par, so they're very, very pleased with this, being able to transport the players and their equipment. And with the Francis Marion Administration's support, was able to bring in a second trainer from McLeod for the 2013-14 year, allowing us to do more treatment in-house and have more complete coverage at home and away games. Those of you that did get an opportunity to attend the auction this year, it will be held again next year, hopefully about the same date, and that yielded slightly over $16,000 to the Athletic Department this year. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, Board members, first of all, let me thank you for your support for the budget this year. You know, over in Stokes Hall, you walk down the main corridor, right before you get to the two atriums, there's a wonderful quote from James Rogers, and goes back to a speech he gave at the dedication of the university in 1970. I haven't committed to memory, so I'll paraphrase it. It goes something like this. "We'll never ask for more than we need, and we'll always use the resources wisely." For 43 years, trustees and presidents have been guided by that quote, and I know this group joins all of us around the table in keeping that same commitment. That's why we still sit here with one of the lowest tuitions in the state of South Carolina, but we offer one of the finest educational experiences, and we still pride ourselves in educating 96 percent of our students being South Carolinians. So, again, I thank you for the support on that budget, and I thank the, and all the Vice Presidents here joining me and pledging to you that we'll keep that same focus. As you heard, as you commented on a little earlier, our enrollment management efforts are going well this year. Kudos are extended to Dr. King and Ms. Wilson and their staff. We're running slightly ahead of where we were last year in the enrollment process, but the men and women that will comprise that class coming in in August, the class of 2017, they look terrific. And you know, every year, I meet them at orientation. We have two of those orientations out of the way now, and I just marvel each year at how terrific those young men and women are, and I just want to publicly thank Peter for all of his terrific effort, for all of his terrific efforts in leading that enrollment management process. Let me just say one word about a dear friend who will not be leaving us, but he will be retiring, and that's Ron Falconberry. You know, I think many of you around this table who are alums, appreciate the contributions Ron has made to the development of that School of Education over the years. And my friend, you know, that old adage is true, that you want to leave a place a lot better than you found it. Well, there's no question about what you've done with that school the last decade. I take my hat off to you. You've done a marvelous job, Ron, and I want you to know, you're welcome back here to do almost anything, anytime you want to come back. I would also remind the trustees that we'll host a reception for Ron at the President's House on July 17th, and that'll be open to the community, but we want to make sure if it's convenient to your schedule that you'll be able to come and join us. Again, that's July 17th for Ron and Wink at the house. Let me give you a quick update on our Health Sciences efforts. As you know, in the budget this year, we asked for two primary things. We asked for $400,000 recurring for the Health Sciences Program, excuse me, for the Industrial Engineering Program. We were able to get that funded in the General Assembly, and the Governor did not veto that. We asked for $5 million for the Health Sciences Building, and it was funded in two parts. One and 3/4 million of that was funded in the Capital Reserve Fund, and 3 and 1/4 of that was funded in the lottery appropriation. The Governor left the Capital Reserve Fund 1 and 3/4 alone, but she did veto the lottery appropriation that contained the 3 and 1/4 million. The House yesterday afternoon, about 5:30, overrode her veto by a vote of 96 to 19 on the appropriation for the Health Sciences Building. And right as we started this meeting, Mr. Chair, they were on veto number 61 in the Senate, and we're veto number 69, so if I don't drag my feet on the President's report, perhaps we'll know in just a couple of minutes how we fare on the Senate, but I think we're pretty comfortable with regard to our assurances as to what will happen in the Senate. And I would remind everybody here why that building's so important. Remember, that building will accommodate our nurse practitioner students, our physician assistant students after 2016, and it will accommodate the third and fourth year medical students from the USC School of Medicine who will begin there next fall. So that becomes a pretty important building for us, and that's a facility that will be sited in downtown Florence, hopefully in close proximity to the Performing Arts Center. And if we're able to get that through the Senate, establish a project, do the architectural engineering work, and get the plans drafted within the next eight or nine months, that's a building that could be up by the first quarter of 2015. And Mr. Norwood, that means roughly about 350 graduate health science professional students downtown every single day undergoing their training. It'll be terrific opportunity to train health professionals through the PD, but another major chapter in the revitalization of downtown Florence, and this university is very, very proud to be a part of that. Very quickly, we do have this coming year a SACS accreditation review. It's the mid-year, it's a midterm review. Remember, our comprehensive SACS reviews every 10 years. Next year will be the midpoint of our last review, and that report will be due in SACS in the spring, and my good friend back in the corner, Charlene Wages, will spearhead that effort for us. I should point out to everybody on the board that the fact that she's in a wheelchair has no bearing whatsoever on our accreditation efforts, I don't think, but we'll report to you during the course of the year as to how that SACS preparation process is underway, and Charlene will bring you a more comprehensive report at the August retreat. Let me speak, if I might, Mr. Chairman, about the August retreat very, very quickly. Last year, we put the strategic plan behind us. You reviewed that and passed it in the spring. You passed the master facilities plan for the university. So at the August retreat, what we'll invite the board to do is work with us in looking at the programs that we intend to put in place over the next five years at the university. We'll ask the board to look at those programs conceptually, look at the operating and capital outlays that will be necessary for each of those programs, and then at the end of that retreat, we'll step back and say, what does all this mean, and a holistic view towards the direction the university will take over the next decade or two. So, Ms. Chairman, with your permission out of the board, that's the direction we will take on the retreat coming up.
And those dates are August 2nd and 3rd?
First and second.
First and second.
Yes, sir, first and second.
Thursday afternoon, Friday.
Yes, sir. I believe you come in, Ms. Chairman, at 2:30 on Thursday afternoon, which is August the 1st.
2:30?
Yes, sir.
Just for planning.
For planning. And then that afternoon will be spent going through these issues, and then Friday morning, the board will conduct its normal quarterly business meeting. And then, Ms. Chairman, I guess the last comment I would make, as always, is how much we appreciate the support of the board in everything that we do. There's seldom a day or two that goes by in which I don't hear from a board member relative to a piece of business associated with the university, and I just, I comment to trustee McIntyre before we sat down, what a terrific board we have. You know, there's, I've never, in 14 years, I've never seen a faction on this board. I've never seen a board member be contentious or acrimonious over an issue. You're civil and gentle and supportive with one another, and even more important, you're civil and gentle and collaborative. And even more important, you're civil and gentle and collaborative with me and the vice president. And I guess on behalf of all the vice presidents, I want to tell you how much we appreciate the time and effort you contribute to the governance of this institution. And, Ms. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought you were going to get emotional there.
No, sir, I wouldn't do that. But I did see Mr. Coleman tear up a little bit.
I think he had a call. Thank you. Any questions, discussion with the president before we move on? We, well, we really appreciate what you do and personally, the growth that the university's had on your leadership and certainly your staff and it's just been tremendous and phenomenal and we can't thank you enough for what you do for this university and the community. Moving on to unfinished business. Last meeting, the March meeting, we have a proposed amendment to section four of the Board of Trustees bylaw. Mr. Jackson was chairman of that committee, brought forth with unanimous consent from the committee as a motion. You have it before you. We need to vote on it at this meeting. If there's no discussion, you had an opportunity to look at it, talk about it, discuss it. Any question or anything for a call for a vote? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just as a follow-up to that, because of the election and some of the things, I really thought this would probably be my last meeting as chairman, but what's going to happen now is I've asked. Well, I really. I've asked Ken. And Gail Richardson and Tracy Freeman to serve as the nominating committee. And what they'll do over the next few weeks, and it's a short timeframe, is bring a slate of officers in August to the group. And then they'll be voted on in November and they'll take over in the January, February meeting, I forget that date. If you're interested in serving, and I twisted his arm a little bit, be, feel free to call Mr. Ken Jackson. I know he enjoys doing this and I really appreciate what he's doing with regard to the nominating committee. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, I have one other item that we need to mention. And this is kind of sad in a way, but I wish them the best. A couple of outgoing trustees I want to recognize, Ms. Melissa Emery and Mr. Bradley Bowles. Bradley, are you there?
I am.
I want to personally thank both of you for your dedicated, significant service to Francis Marion University. Have a couple of plaques for you, but before I get to that, I certainly greatly appreciate your support and service to the Francis Marion. And I know although you're leaving, I know you'll continue to support Francis Marion in a variety of ways and you're certainly will always be welcome here. And for me personally, and I know the, the board probably feels the same way, for your future endeavors, I think everybody in here would be supported to help you, assist you in any way possible as you venture into new things. And we very much thank you for your service. I'll start with Melissa. Fifteen years, actually, we have a nice plaque and you can look at that, will be presented to Melissa Johnson Emery, Board of Trustees from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand thirteen. And I remember when she came and I think Robert and Ken and were right there. Things weren't always as good when you came. Now, I remember, y'all remember some of those days. Anyway, certainly made a significant difference and it says, "An appreciation for extinguished service and a recognition of her commitment to excellence on behalf of the board, administration, faculty, and students." And I want to give her that. And I'm very happy for any board member to add to that if you'd like. This would be appropriate time before she gives her speech.
Don't get Robert to write a talk.
Bradley, he's, and the difference, only difference Bradley, in yours is just the date, Board of Trustees, July two thousand eight to June two thousand thirteen. And again, we're very thankful for your service and you have to come get that. And I think you're already a lifetime alumni member, so we'll think of some other donation. Anybody want to add anything? Feel free. Melissa.
I just enjoyed the service and I will look forward to coming back. This is certainly not the end and I will certainly call upon you and, and visit upon you. I know what a good time y'all have over here and I will not go away quietly. So, I will be back.
And I think it's been, I'm sorry, Bradley, go ahead.
I just want to tell the board how much I appreciate their support. To me, over the years, their friendship, the fellowship has meant a lot. Fred, just, you know, we knew you were doing an outstanding job before I got there and then be able to see it firsthand, to see just all the staff and administration of the school is just an amazing thing. It's, it's a great thing to be in the upstate of South Carolina and know that that school is really taking care of the BD area. And it's just been an honor and a pleasure to be able to serve. I hope I have the opportunity in the future to continue.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to, to comment on, and it's been said before, the relationships and friendships that we make on this board are invaluable. And I want to repeat what's been said in that, please feel free to call on any of us as you leave the board and go about other business that, that you've made friends for life while serving on this board and we'd like for you to stay in touch with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Last chance. That lightning kind shook me up. Still a little nervous.
Brad, this is fine. I, I hope you will continue to invite all of us to your barbecue.
You, you have a standing invitation anytime.
Thank you. Any new business, anything?
Ms. Chairman, I would just like to note this week, the passing of Dr. Jim Potterfield, who was our original chair of the Education Department. And Dr. Potterfield was instrumental in helping develop our Education Department into the outstanding program that it is today. And I just, on behalf of the board, would like to extend our condolences to his family.
You know, Ken, Jimmy's funeral was this morning. Many of the people in this room were at attendance at that, at that funeral. About half the people who were there were university people. I was, I was gratified to see so many of Jimmy's colleagues turn out to, to recognize him and honoring at, at his funeral. And, and he had nothing but positive things to say about Jimmy's memories of the university. Thank you for reminding us of that.
Thank you very much. No other new business? Here, having no further business, I move that we adjourn. Meeting's now adjourned. Thank you.